Have Hayden as quick as possible get us a budget because my guesstimate is that that work he's got proposed, once we get the permits and do it all, we're, we might be pushing a quarter of a million dollars. We don't have that money. We need to have a discussion of where we're going to get the money to do that because we're talking about ready, going out to do bids and we need to do it fairly quickly because all of these things are critical. And we've got to go through the permitting process and that's going to take probably 60 days. So to be able to start January or mid-January when the water levels are down to do this work, we're going to have to have the money if we're going to be going to bid and authorizing contractors proceed. Right now, as I see it, I don't think we have the money allocated anywhere. So I guess the question is, what was your idea of where we're going to get the money?
Originally, we looked at, we had that $350,000 budgeted. We had an estimate of $250,000 for the pipe cleaning, so we had $100,000 surplus in that. And then we were going to pull a little bit out of the stormwater maintenance fee. I imagine we were estimating that that cost would come back to about $150,000.
For those three?
For the flowways, yeah.
Yeah, now, he needs to add, and I put it in my email to you, we need to add that 84-inch in Gateway. That's a major restriction.
Sorry, I didn't know.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Slide over.
Mr. Tinkelman, depending upon the cost breakdown, construction versus maintenance, if you recall, once we exceed a certain threshold for construction, then we have to go through the CCNA process for the engineering work. So it's important to have a good faith estimate of the breakout between construction and maintenance to see whether or not we do have a breakout.
Well, that was the question. What is the engineering cost to do the plans, to finalize these plans and get the permits? What's our contract?
$5,400.
$5,400 to do all the work, get a ready for bid?
Yeah, but my question was on the construction versus maintenance component. So if construction is under the threshold, you don't have a CCNA, but once again...
Well, my point was, we've got to bid this work.
Right.
Well, I'm talking about the engineering scope of work. You know, the CCNA kicks in if you have a project, construction costs over a certain threshold.
So the engineering work, regardless of whether it's under $10,000, $5,000, if it's associated with a project that's greater than $190,000...
$5,000.
$5,000, you have to go through procurement?
CCNA.
Well, there's, there's no way we're going to meet that. There's no way in hell.
Okay, and then for now, just so we have it on the record, that we have, that we break up the components.
So what, what do we did?
No, I'm just saying, if Chris breaks it out, construction is under the threshold, the maintenance is X number of dollars, then we don't have to worry about going through the CCNA process, is all I'm saying.
We start all over. If the cost of the construction of this work of these four tasks is going to exceed $195, does that mean we have to go through procurement of the engineering firm doing the design of that?
Yes.
We're over it.
I think Chris indicated it's maintenance and construction.
Well, there is no construction involved in it. It's all maintenance work. It's cleaning the flowways.
I thought there was like haul roads being constructed and also...
It's just when the contractor comes around stabilizing that bank so they can move the equipment.
Okay, once again...
It's not a permanent, it's not a permanent road by any means. It's just where there might be overgrown, you know, to have that 10 feet of space to move the equipment around.
Again, you just had that breakout sort of to show that we don't have any issues.
If you're confident that it's maintenance and we don't have that issue, I'm not going to get into an argument on it. I, I don't, I hope you're right.
There's nothing new being constructed.
Well, the thing that I'm concerned, the thing I'm concerned about is, is that when I looked at the plans, and now knowing that we can talk about it, being a professional engineer working with it, we got shown, or they got shown on those cross-sections, three to one slopes. I'm not aware that we have a permitting gateway that allows three to one slopes. So I don't know how we're going to get around that. And when you go to four to one, you're, that's no longer maintenance. That's, that's cut. That's what I'm worried about. I don't know, did somebody check and verify that the, and the big one is on the west side of I-75, that 800-foot run is, it's tight. It's really tight. I Googled it and it looks like it's, and I think somebody else did the same thing, it works out to be mystically 91 feet. And the cross-section of the drawing, 91 feet. So I, I hope somebody didn't do what I did, but they actually went to the field and we know that we can build that in there. But that's based on three to one. If we go to four to one, you can't get it in there. It won't fit. So my thing is, is are these guys checking these permits to find out that we can build these to these designs they've got?
Yeah, we, we looked at the permits over there and the permits when you get across I-75 and over in the slough, that's not Gateway standard. You know, it's not our four to one pond standard, on bank standard.
Well, my understanding that, here's why I thought it was. In Gateway, the majority of our ponds are the flowway. And they are at four to one, with the exception of Silver Lake, which is six to one. So my thing is, is a flowway is a, flowway is a flowway. I can't see what the difference is between here, going into PP, and/or going across west of I-75. I just want to make sure somebody's checked. Because if it is and has to be at four to one, it ain't going to work. It's not going to work.
We pulled the original SWIFTMUD drawings and their plans.
And did they show it being built at three to one?
I'd have to look at it. I think it worked three to one.
I just want to make sure our rear's covered because our window for getting the permit, getting the bids, and doing this work, which is critical work, is thin. Really thin.
Can you hold off for just a second? Chris, we're now in the second month of our new fiscal year. Do you have any idea when we're going to have an idea of what I'm going to call surplus from the fiscal '18 that we can bring budget appropriations forward and possibly do a budget amendment through for fiscal '19 and have more money than we currently think we do?
We are still awaiting the reconciliation and final report. And Mr. Bloom said it would be ready any day.
And he did.
Yeah, so originally, they were going to have it about two weeks ago. So we do not have a final financial statement yet.
Do you have a, do you have a ballpark number that we can be thinking about?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't guess in public.
It's probably not a good idea.
If you...
Aw, come on.
If you want me to ballpark this, I would say that maybe about $400,000.
I think we're going to have to consider doing a budget amendment here before long.
I, I would agree with that, Bill.
Chairman, I'm trying to stand corrected. The threshold for construction is 325. I just told the check. It sounds like we're going to be in good shape.
What happened, what happened with $195?
That's a different category of work.
And we also are going to bid that in elements. So, you know, we have it individually and if it looks like, you know, cost, you know, we'll have to prioritize it.
Mr. Banks?
Chris, the, the work that Ed is referring to, it appears is underway. Would you, would you say that it's running according to the schedule? I mean, is there any cause for concern as far as elevating the timeline or as far as you are managing it appropriately to, to what the need is? I'm just trying to, you know, Ed wants to escalate it and I just don't know.
Yeah, I've got a ton of questions now that, I was concerned about the engineering side of it. But if they are indeed a registered engineering firm and PE licensed that we're going to need to get the permits, I'll send Chris all of my detailed comments on the plan review, but most of them we've hit that are the critical things. And then some of them, we've got some issues that we don't have an LME in where we're doing work. I, I remember we had that come up before. And in fact, I think I saw something just recently, South Florida or Lee County, one of the others said, no LME, no permit.
Well, I'm looking, that's the only thing I'm working on now in the next month. The same thing like the flowway going through hidden links, same thing. It's an easement. We don't control that or own it. So I'll have to get together with Lennar and get a temporary construction easement to do that work.
You're talking about from Gateway Boulevard over to the pond?
Yeah. Going into, I think it's 129, 127.
What, 130?
130.
Yeah, and what, there's another one, that when that was originally designed, there is supposed to be, as I understand it, a weir that's there that that water goes into and protects Stony Brook. That weir was never built. That weir was never built. So we might want to be doing some checking on that. At this point in time, though, our bigger deal was to get that channel cleaned all the way. Then the other one is, is that in the bid schedule, are they using or planning to use the fabric, the Armamax that we have as surplus to do this work? Because the bid schedule does not identify where the materials are coming from.
Yeah, we have enough surplus to do the Stony Brook in a couple of different areas. And that, that material's over there. And to answer your question, Mr. Banks, I put together some preliminary project schedules. Right now, with the lake bank restoration, that was advertised Monday, the bids will be in the end of November and the first part of December. We will bring the final bids to the board January 3rd. But in that timeframe between when the bids come in, the first part of December, we'll be working on the contract and all the SRF docs. So when it comes to the board, January 3rd, whatever the board approves, we'll be ready to move forward. On the pipe cleaning, you're basically looking, I have here the specifications. And the only thing I'm going to do is port those over to Tony tomorrow to review. These will go out on the street in the next couple of weeks. So after your January 3rd meeting, two weeks later, you'll have the bids and the information.
So we're on schedule for those, those two items. We're, we're pushing along.
Who prepared those specs?
We did, in-house.
In-house. Can we get, before meeting next two weeks, get a pre-bid estimate on both that work and have Hayden do a pre-bid estimate? He's got a bid schedule. He's, he knows all the costs. Get a bid schedule on that flowway work so that we know, are we talking 250? We talking 325? We talking 130? What are we talking? Because that meeting on two weeks hence is going to be talking about budgetary numbers.
Sure, he's doing cut sheets. And we already have the estimate for the pipe cleaning, $252,000, which I think is going to be pretty close to what it is. And when you get with the conveyance cleaning, we can get all the easements we want. That will follow up and by the end of January. So all this is all stacked up to be issuing notice to proceed in January to take advantage of the dry season, starting with the lake bank first, the storms who are second, the conveyance is third.
That's great.
Chairman, I may have one comment, followed to what Chris was saying, in response to the question by Mr. Guy. The concern is by statute, any amendment to the budget for last fiscal year needs to be made within 60 days of the close of that fiscal year. So we need to have it November 15th meeting probably. Otherwise, we may not make it. 60 days would be November 29th. So...
Got any other goodies?
Lean on Steve and Bloom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says governing body of each special district at any time within a fiscal year, or within 60 days following the end of the fiscal year, may amend the budget for that year as follows. And it talks about various aspects, appropriations for expenditures within a fund may be decreased or increased by motion. But that has to happen within 60 days. Because I've had other districts where they got called on it by the auditors for not doing that. Did you have a problem?
Mrs. Flair, she...
That's a 25, 189.016, uh, four, or five, excuse me.
When can Mr. James finish?
Six.
The next one is the Lake Main project. We're out for bid on the Lake Bank project. We've got six ponds, as was mentioned earlier. We've done some calculations and some estimates. And I think, Tyler, I don't know, that Steve Bloom verified your numbers. I'm going to take them as being pretty accurate.
Um, I don't know.
Because I think we've got an issue that the board needs to know about. It was a surprise to me. We've approved $8 million for assessments that we've been assessing the residents on the assumption that we would be at that number as phase one of funding, not necessarily on the ponds, but of funding, that we're collecting from residents, rates and charges to finance, debt finance, eight million. I thought we had approved from SRF up to $8 million. We may have had, but we don't anymore. Apparently, they have taken some of the money away. We now have five, four, five, five, somewhere in that neighborhood of spent SRF monies. And long story short, if these bids come in where we think they're going to come in, we could be a half a million short of funds, which means we have to go back to SRF. Now, the question is timing and how you do it. Up north, typically, what we would do is bid it and then go back with an accurate number of what you need, not going in ahead of time and estimating what you need and then have the bids come in low and then find out it was all a goose chase. We need to know that as a board because there can be a risk. And the risk is, is when we take the bids and we need the 500,000 and we applied in state to get the 500,000, it isn't there.
Well, the other thing is, we...
We've got an issue there.
Just like we did last year, and we bid out all the lakes, but we didn't do all the work. So we don't have to actually do all six lakes. We just need to see what we come back, what it comes back at.
Well, the, the six ponds and the people that are on those six ponds, I would disagree with you.
I understand.
Mr. Tinkelman, what we'll do is, as soon as we get those bids in, we'll send those to SRF.
Get to Pankosh.
And request an amendment to the agreement to cover those costs.
Right, right.
And that, that will go up the same week we get those bids, believe me, so.
Yeah, we need to get that back. Then the last one I had was the issue of, I'd asked Tony, he sent to me, and there was just a lot of confusion, of the issue of roads in public preserve, of what roads are public and what roads aren't. Tony gave me a, what did you call that, exhibit A, that was done as a part of the golf cart issue.
Golf cart issue, right.
And it was missing some stuff. But long story short, I'd asked Tyler, because he thought he had one, we need a, you got it? That's it?
That's it.
Those, all those roads. So in essence, everything, everything in public preserve is a public road except for the roads that enter into a condo association.
Well, that map isn't fully good. It doesn't have Cypress Grove.
Correct. So that map, sorry, I'm going to just say my name for the record. My name's Tyler Wainwright. I want to say it for the record. So that map's old. It does not include the new community. That's prior to Gateway taking conveyance of the Cypress Grove communities. But I can tell you that every single road Cypress Grove needs is going to Gateway, if they haven't already conveyed it. So...
Well, here, and, once again, the district has acquired title to a number of the roads by deed. That's what the conveyance is in turn over. The class may have a dedication to the district, but we may not yet have accepted it.
Okay. Here's where I'm going on all this. We got a different situation. We got a similar situation in Stony Brook. These are public roads. In the case of public preserve, Bob, Phil, and that gang, well, not Bob, but Phil, he, I'm giving you the roads, Bob. You've got the storms, so there's, you don't get anything else. They, if they have three times, four times as many roads as they thought they had, and they're doing capital reserve for future on those roads, because I can tell you, over at Gateway Greens, we've got 11 miles of roads. And I don't know, you guys could probably have more than that. The amount of money you have to have set aside for the, the care of those roads on a 20-year basis is phenomenal. And if you're dealing with half the roads you think you got, that's going to be a shock to somebody. That's what we want to make, I want to make sure that Stony Brook, or public preserve, and in the case of Stony Brook, everybody knows what they have.
I believe our recent capital study covered all of those roads, but, but you're right, Ed. But it took into account the new roads in Cypress Grove. And I think...
Which would be inclusive of Prado and Pistoy.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop here because we're getting way off out in the weeds. So you have...
Well, we, we need to be in the weeds because we have let this sit for years. And it, these are our roads, people.
I understand.
And I don't want somebody to come back and say, you, me, later on, how'd you let this happen?
I understand. And if you have anything else?
That's it for District Manager and Utility Manager.
Okay. Mrs. Flair?
I have a question for the attorney first.
Go ahead.
Mr. Tinkelman was, Mr. Bloom, to, to look into the, that loan. I want to know where we legally stand. Do we have to make a motion to vote on that?
No, I think, I think a consensus of the board to have Mr. Bloom, or Mr. Shoemaker, Mr. Bloom to verify that. We're talking about the fire year loan or SRF?
No, fire year loan.
A fire loan? I think just a consensus right now. At time, at a later point in time, after, typically, Stephen may talk to a bank to get a term sheet. And sometimes to formalize the term sheet, the banks may want a letter of formal action by the board. But right now, just a consensus of the board is sufficient.
Since the storms who are cleaning is not eligible, or questionably not eligible for SRF, we don't want to go beyond five years because of the validation. And the last thing I want to do is spend $200,000 on fees for a $2 million deal. Go to the bank.
Again, no formal action is taking the board's direction has been provided to Mr. Bloom.
I just wanted to know, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. And may I ask the District Manager some questions?
Go right then.
Thank you. I haven't seen anything referring back to the insurance or FEMA. Have we gotten any money from them yet?
No.
Our insurance or FEMA?
No, there's been no distribution of funds.
Okay. Is that even from our insurance company?
From our insurance company, we have had some, I believe, but people know.
Okay. Could we get the amount from the insurance company so we know how much the insurance company has reimbursed us for some of our work that we've had to do? Because we seem to be hitting a lot of still problems from Hurricane Irma. So. And then I know the permit for the pool, you said, do we have a date? I know it's two weeks. Do you know when, when two weeks is it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. They had a snag getting the permit for the pool. We're going to close it this week. It looks like it's going to be another 10 days. They had two minor comments from the county on their permits, some from the fire department. But once you get those comments, they get a two-week review period to turn around and issue the permit. So.
So we figure...
14, oh yeah.
It's starting working.
So we'll end up closing the pool closure for Thanksgiving?
Yes. And we put notices out, the pools.
Okay.
Mayor, chairman, if I, I'm sorry, Mr. Flair, you interrupted your time.
That's okay.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I thought I wouldn't shoot you if you interrupted. I'm sorry.
No, I have another question for you.
Okay.
Okay. Where are we with the FPL easel?
I have the revised survey and initial review. It looks fine. And when I received it, I sent it out to WCI. I'll complete my work. Hopefully, we can staff up that closing a little soon.
Okay, thank you. No, I'm finished.
Thank you.
He's still going to have a presentation, isn't he?
Yes.
Okay, I feel like that question should...
Oh, I think, even though I'm not on the agenda, I guess I'll, I'll do it next. Is that it?
Yep. If you have something that you need to present?
Briefly, if I may. A question to prison with regards to when board members take office after the election. And the statute to, it's the second Tuesday following the election. So the office for those, election is taking place on November 6th. The successful candidates take office November 20th. That's the, so that, just to clear up any confusion on that. Because every time, every two years, the question comes up.
And last year, or the, two years ago, we moved it to the December meeting because we didn't have a meeting set to course.
Well, but they can take, they can take, they do take office, but the new board generally doesn't meet until after that 20th, because of the nature of the game.
Right. The new board wouldn't meet until the first meeting in this...
Yes. Hampton Park just briefly provided to Mr. DeBose. They proposed exhibit A. And Richard and I talked. It worked out quickly, I'm sure. That's on the drainage line. Well pressed to back in. We made a real pleasant conversation about a week or so ago. Nothing further. Any questions?
Any questions with Tony?
It'll be sensitive. So, here we go. POAs, have you made contact with the people that we have to get these POAs?
Not yet. Where's the tunnel report? The tunnel company's way behind. I have the form of the letter already drafted. And the addresses of all, I found the addresses of those individuals by using a B service, service that we have. And so...
I want to get that done. Get that, get that done.
As soon as I get that tunnel work, try to attach that tunnel work.
The next one is, where do we stand, where do we stand as a board, as an entity, relative to the two communities that have public roads and have guardhouses? An incident occurred two weeks ago. I haven't had any problems myself at public reserve. I go in there, tell them who I am, and I, they let me go through. No, no issues. But Gateway Greens, our design review committee is looking at roofs. We're getting a lot of people who want to put in metal roofs. Right now, we don't have a lot of metal roofs in Gateway Greens. And they said, well, you could go look at them. And they gave us two or three addresses in Stony Brook. And so committee members went up there and they were denied access to go in there. And when they told them we're there to look at roofs, they said, that's not good enough. Excuse. That doesn't get it. That's a public road. They cannot be doing that.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I think we need a, a letter from you to Castle Group, which runs them both, and read Castle Group the rules that they don't understand that these are public roads. And there is a big difference between a community that has a private road and a public road. Public road, you can't, you can't stop people from coming in.
Man, man, because they live in that community. The guards at the gatehouse have been told what the rules are. At a particular time, it may have happened that the guard wasn't aware of the humans because they used different guards at different days. And the men have been educated. But it's actually in the post orders. So...
They're saying that it's the master association is telling them to do what they're doing. So if that's the case, I guess there's a misunderstanding of coming from the either Castle Group or the master association to get down to the guy that's doing the work because they, they wouldn't let him in. And I, I was, what I heard about, you can't do that. You can't do that.
What a well-known narrative.
Well, my deal is, I would like to have the attorney send a letter to Castle Group on behalf of both PP and the other. Because this came into the same issue with the signs, with the signs.
This was the access issue. If the board's so direct, I'll send a letter to both the Castle management, reminding them of the, they can't deny access. They can require people stay only on the public roads if they have no destination. And that's typically what the post orders indicate.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
That's exactly what I'm looking.
That's what our post orders are.
That's what our post orders are too. I don't, I hate to waste money on a, on a letter to have Tony send a formal letter out reiterating what has...
The post orders were, were written right.
Yeah, we've not had any, haven't had an issue with that public preserve. It just came up over there.
We meet with our, we meet with our security company once a month, and the board, board members do their, they handle that. I'll pass along the information.
That's fine, that's fine. The, okay, we, we talked about the POAs. That's all I had.
I hesitate to say this, but I would like to make mention when you read the report, and I will take exception to what Ed said. It's mainly litorals. Litorals are certainly a part of it. But if you adopted the public preserve approach to your ponds, some of these ponds, we wouldn't do anything to. It's going to be about 40% of the cost that 's currently projected. The only reason I want to say that is if you're already going out for bids, what are you bidding? If you're bidding fix everything, then this was a wasted effort. We're trying to give you a lower cost. So read it, consider it, and I think you have to modify the bids. Because we would not do everything you would ask.
And, and I, we understand that. And I didn't have a chance to read it all. But I will get a chance to read it and talk with Chris about it.
Well, for the board, we should have, because you've got to have, compare apples to apples here. Tyler, do we have a set 24 to 36 drawings of the six ponds here that board members can look at in light of what Bob just said?
I do. I've wrote it all.
I can run off as many hard copies as you need.
Well, the reason I bring this up is, and Bob and I just don't agree on some of this, because we have an issue and we have a responsibility. South Florida Water Management District has made it clear, if you have a scarlet nine inches and/or you have a slope that's going to be four to one, it'll be fixed. And they don't care whether it's a residential or a church, or wherever, or wherever. And to me, that's the rules we have to go by and we have to follow that. We don't have any choice.
Well, Ed, you're saying then you'd have to fix conservation areas where there's no human beings.
We, we do, we do.
You don't? You don't. That's a waste of money.
Bob, I'm, I'm telling you, it's...
Who's going to write it up? The birds?
South Florida has told us this.
If you want to waste money, go ahead and do it that way. That's a waste of money.
Mr. Shoemaker, do you have anything else to bring up on your management?
No.
All right. District Engineer, you are on...
Good afternoon. My name is Tyler Wainwright. I'm District Engineer for today. The only item we have today is just the ask authorization status update, which is on there for your use. If you do have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. Chris already covered the lake bids, which are out for bid right now. I believe we have a pre-bid set up for that. I think it's next week.
Two, two pre-bids, isn't it?
Two, there's two pre-bids. So I'm not sure, actually, if we discussed, I should probably mention this. I'm not sure if we discussed this at the board level with everyone. But the, the plan of attack this year was to bid it on two, two bids. So there's three ponds going out in bid number one, and there's three ponds going out in bid number two. And the plan is that all of them will still be awarded individually, but they'll be received at two different dates. So that if somebody couldn't bid on all six, and they only wanted to bid on two of them, well, if they bid two and they don't get them, well, they can still go bid again. And you get the opportunity for more bidders. So that was the plan this year.
And those bids are based on this as drawn, right?
Yes, sir. That is what is currently out for bid. So I guess just to tack on to what Bob mentioned earlier, last week, we went around and walked the lakes. Bob and Mr. Zander both walked around and gave their opinions. And if you want to make any changes, we'd be more than happy to. Just let us know.
Please, the bid package is already out. Right. So we'd have to amend the, the bid
Please, the bid package is already out, right? So we'd have to amend the bid packages, as it's.
We could do an agenda.
Maybe.
If needed, necessary.
So, I haven't read what Bob did, but I, I think, just because I was talking to him when we were there, some of his comments are probably going to be there certain areas on the lakes that maybe are not as bad as others, and he would not recommend to do. So the approach that, that was, that we were tasked with was to basically repair the residential side of those lakes. So if there was, you know, two houses that are pretty good, and but the rest of the lake was bad, well, we just kept on going past those two houses. We included those two houses. So, you know, entire lake didn't get fixed and two people being left out for whatever reason. And that's just a hypothetical example. But if, you know, if, if you want to take an approach of don't do those two houses and leave them as is, you can certainly do that. I don't personally think you need to amend the bid package. It's just when you go to make the award, it's a unit price bid for per linear foot. So if you bid 800 foot and you really only want to do 600 foot, you can do, still do just 600 feet. You don't got to do the whole thing.
Can I ask a question? So, I think one of the areas that I struggle with when it comes to the, the lakes, the, this whole restoration project, is trying to find what we consider severity and what is, what's critical. I don't know if we have anything other than, I guess, Ed, what you would probably say is what South Florida Management, you know.
No, it's not what South Florida Water Management says. It's what our permit says.
So, I, I think we have to, as a board, determine what our criteria is for not only restoration, but severity for all the ponds. Or else we're going to get to a point where, one, we can't afford all the lakes the, the way that they're, the, the way that the estimates are coming back, and do utilities, and sewer cleaning, and do all these different things. Especially if we want to maintain a reasonable assessment. I mean, I would suggest, and I would speak to this in supervisor comments, not will, but if we want to, you know, keep assessments flat next year, that'll be virtually impossible at the rate that we're going with, with lake banks. Or we have to prolong it, and, and no one wants, if you're sitting on a lake and you're in the third phase, you don't want to wait 15 years. You may not even be here. So I think the board, what I would advise and suggest is at some point, we have to come up with a standard that we can, we can use as a calibration. So, okay, does this lake or this section meet our, our predefined standard as we determine it, whether that's in line with what our, what our permit criteria, our standard is, or whatever? We need to have some type of measuring stick, or else we're just going to go back and forth on, well, how severe is it? Well, we, engineering said we should do this, or maybe we shouldn't, or pond groups says that you should or should not. We've got to have some type of standard. So there is no second guessing our decision as we move forward with, with the lake banks. That's my only input to that.
And, and I think part of the standard is we have to repair drop-offs. We can't just leave lake banks where there's an actual drop-off.
Well, and that drop-off, that's, if it's four to one.
Well, it's, it's not, what she's referring to is the, what they call the escarpment.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, the state's made it clear. It's nine inches. If it's more than nine inches, you fix it.
I just, I just wanted to agree, whatever that is.
And their deal is they don't care where it's at? Church, golf course? Where? It's nine inches.
And part of that too, we have.
Is that a high water mark, nine inches?
I assume it's at the control elevation. Everything they do is at control elevation.
Well, and that's what, and then we also have to discuss what is our, you know, what's our risk tolerance of that? Are there certain things that we may have to, you know, not fix because we can't afford to do it and unwilling to assume the risk? But that's a collective, you know, conversation that we all have to have. What is our, what, what risk tolerance do we have? What is the standard we're going to adhere to? Because I have a hard time right now, looking at ponds here, them, you know, them coming out, who's got a lot of experience, our engineering and, and Ed and others that are involved, you know, they're not all in unison saying we have to fix this, you know, these ponds this way. And so it puts me, and I, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but it, it puts me in an opposition because I don't know this, I'm not a supplemental expert in this area. I know I don't want to continue to spend the amount of money that we've got at least projected when we've got so many other things that we need to fix. So we just need to be very sensitive around this and be very, you know, conscious in our execution path and do our due diligence. That's the only thing I'll say there.
I agree with you.
I agree with you, Chris.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Of course. You have a date of November 9th for the permitting for the storage facility design?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are we really set for November 9th?
Um.
Or are we going to have another two weeks, two months delay? I'm just wondering.
As of right now, we are on track to do it. I will say that we, in order to complete the county view, we do need to hydrate work for the property. But other than that, the, the fire line permitting is fine. I don't see any issues with that. We have supposedly worked out the issues that we have with South Florida over attenuation and water quality of the site. And then, that was really it from last time, was the, the last big hanger was the, the fire department for access and for the hydrant.
Okay, so we are moving along with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Question on that.
Go ahead.
Switching hotspot. With all the changes that, that staff has had and board has had, what are we looking at the estimate of the park right now?
I don't know.
We, we under 300,000?
Let me think for a second. The last estimate we did was before we added the additional stormwater and before we added the hydrant. So I have not done one since we added those two items.
At that time?
At that time, it was like 290 or something like that.
So we're going to be popping 300 or more?
Yeah.
What do we have in the budget? I don't even recall that being in our capital budget. Am I missing that?
I, I thought it was around 250, but.
I think she'll be able to tell you here in just a second.
I didn't bring my budget. Chris, do you remember? Is it in the, in the capital improvement?
I have to look and see. I do not recall this funding concern.
I remember this building being in it, but I don't, I don't think the, that thing is in it.
I think it is.
The storage facility.
I thought it was around 250, but.
Anyway, what I'm trying to do is to get an idea of what the dollar value is again, so that when we meet in two weeks, we've got all these things coming together and we have the right facts.
Well, I mean, I think the appropriate thing for us to do is to put together a new estimate, including all of that.
I think we need that before the, the meeting.
Sure. And, and Chris, I think you were absent when this, this item came up. The first half authorization, it's 14 dash O seven, the AutoCAD assistance. We had a conversation on this, that we potentially strike it, but I think Ed brought a point that there is some ongoing needs in this area, and I think, I don't know, Mike, if, if you were going to get with Chris, so Chris could circle back with Danny to update this. But we need to determine that it's either in scope and we have a need, or we need to, we need to pull it from the task authorization.
You're talking about GIS?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the AutoCAD assistance. I think it is, I think it is regarding GIS updates.
We, we need to get that system put together.
So the question is, is this task authorization still valid?
I think it had money in the budget, didn't it?
It was like 16.
Eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars for each of the utilities, something like that, and then it was a certain amount for, of a one.
But I don't know if, if, I don't know if, if this, if this task authorization aligns to that work. If it does, let's make sure it's updated. We've got, you know, the right requirements, and then we can make it active if it's, if it is. Or if we either new task authorization and scrap this one. I just, this is one I know that there was a follow-up on, and I think you were out, so I'm not sure if there was any action.
I was looking into it. We're actually going to discuss it with Danny and Marty tomorrow, our follow-up meeting.
Is, um, is Gateway still using GIS solution, or are you guys using somebody else now?
We're using nobody.
Okay.
We're trying to get Pelican.
That's part of the, that's part of the.
We're trying to get a Pelican's model.
Sounds good.
Is it from last year's budget? It was part of last year's budget, because it was from.
I know it was in 2018, but I don't know.
I thought, I thought we carried it over.
We did carry it over, but I don't know.
All right, we just have to ask Stephen.
That's Tyler, go quick.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
What, um, back to this deal that Hayden's going to be doing, what, what are we, what are we looking at as far as the time to get these permits that we're going to have to have to do those flowway improvements? So we work backwards of when we're going to be able to do this. How fast do we need, if we want to do a January or let's say February 1 start, when do we have to have those permits in to get the permits and ERP modifications and da-da-da-da-da, all of them?
So, the, the plans that I saw, the one that I know you're going to need a permit for is the Stony Brook outfall. Because you're basically doing the same thing we're doing in the lake banks, and that's what the county may as good as develop an order for. So that process is six to eight weeks, I would say, with the county.
So we need to be, Chris, do you know is Tom on schedule or Chris on schedule to be submitting these permits here in the next, say, two to three weeks?
Yeah, we're just starting, starting to work on those right now as we finalize.
Can he bring to the November 15th meeting the final drawings?
Well, sure.
So we can have those. I'll get my comments, and then he can incorporate those, but I think the big thing is, is we, we got to push and get that stuff done to be able to get, get that work done.
Yeah, we aren't planning on hiring anything, because I think what you're going to do is put some of the TRM channel slopes for that Stony Brook outfall.
Yeah, you need an LDO for that.
Side, side to side, it's a.
Absolutely, an LDO.
Well, the one I'm, I was more concerned about the road going across that FPL easement. What, what do we get to run into there? I like the idea for maintenance.
It depends. I mean, again, the, the plans that I saw, I just said main road. I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's an impervious road.
Question, is he planning on going to crash it?
I don't know.
No, we're, that's just temporary to run to do the work to have a loader on this side.
So it's not a permanent maintenance road. It's a construction maintenance road.
Correct.
Oh, I didn't understand. Now, not the one, not the one on I-75 isn't. That's a permanent road, isn't it? I hope so, because that's how we're going to get back to the pond.
Well, we won't be able to do anything out there unless we have control of that property. We still don't have an easement, so if that issue isn't settled, we won't be doing anything out there.
I thought we were going to do it and worry about, uh.
Easement later.
Yeah, easement later. I mean, we've been waiting, waiting, waiting.
Well, I, I think Tony said, maybe I misunderstood you, I thought we have an easement, but we don't have the deed for it.
There are questions. There's an easement. The question is, was there, was a question as to are the proper parties?
No, I'm just talking about the part that's WCI owns right now, that when we go across I-75 with the ditch and turn, according to LEPA, that's the start of the WCI piece that includes the pond. That, I understand that we have an easement on right now.
You do. You have an easement.
So we would be able to put a road on that, since there's a road there right now.
There is a road there right now. Now, we had the conversation with South Florida many moons ago about that road is really low, and we would really like to be able to raise it so we could actually use it as a road.
We go to four to one slope, you'll have plenty of dirt.
Well, the comment that we got from South Florida was is that that road was permitted at a certain elevation. Their comment was, you can go survey it all you like, but if that elevation is what was permitted, you ain't changing it unless you get an ERP.
Do you know what that number is?
I don't. I haven't surveyed that area. And the plan that I saw didn't show it, so I don't know.
When you say the plan, the plans, the original plans?
No, the plan that, that one, that you don't want your hand.
Well, it shows it in the cross section. That's element six. The paths at elevation 1985, which would be 1.15, would be 21.
The whole way to 1985? I find that very hard to believe.
Doesn't say that. Doesn't say that.
The elevation change is two feet on that roadway from north to south, so if it's at one elevation, that's just.
Well, I'm assuming the south, the south end would be the high end and the north end would be the low end.
So what are you sloping to?
I, I don't know.
I don't know either. That's my point of the point.
Okay, we need to do some engineering work on that to make sure, because if, if you've got a document that shows that there is a elevation that South Florida is going to get picky units on, we need to know what that number is.
There is. It's the original permit back from eighty, yeah, eighty, eighty, whatever it was. There's, there's an permanent elevation for that road.
Well, that weir is at 17.
Yep.
That weir is at 17. God, if it was anything greater than 21, that's four feet.
I don't think it's that high.
I hope it's not that, any higher.
From what I remember, it's pretty low, which was the issue, because we wanted to improve it, but again, you know.
Are they saying we can go up?
No, they're saying that that's what you can get.
Yeah.
It's what it is.
We better get it.
Unless you get another ERP.
Unless you modify the ERP, which you can do. You just have to show that you're not negatively impacting downstream parts.
Any other questions for Park District Engineer? Nope. I guess that means that you have the rest of the evening off.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
All right. Got a consent agenda items? Does anybody have consent agenda items they want to call?
Yeah, B.
I'm sorry, that? C and D. C and D. So we'll start with B.
What'd you say?
C and D.
C and D. Uh, B, there was no discussion. Mr. Brand brought into that meeting and had a discussion and presented to staff a whole bunch of materials that was for the record. And I didn't see those acknowledged anywhere in those minutes whatsoever. In fact, it's like they, it didn't even happen. And staff was given, I thought, a copy of it, of the stuff that he presented to the, the board. And I don't know what happened to those documents, but it's not even mentioned in the, the minutes. I'd like to have those minutes corrected.
I don't, I'm sorry, excuse me, it probably was, I was not here. I came in late that evening. What documents are you talking about?
Jim gave, I think I brought copies of it. Yeah, he brought about eight or nine pages of papers that had to do with, Jim, you can describe it better than I can as to what it was. Minutes of meetings, documentation for the record.
Rod Senior provided me documents, and I provided those to Diane Collins of Chris's staff before I spoke. I asked her to make it part of the record. I spoke. Mr. Teakle at the end of the discussion asked that it, that the documents be made part of the record.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm looking at lines 61 and 62, and may not have been provided to Maryland.
That's my guess.
Only because it says a copy to hand out to Mr. Brand, it's not submitted for the final records.
And, and you talked since, though, that Diane doesn't even have them?
I know. I've not talked to her since.
I, I think what Tony said is probably.
I have no idea who this person is.
She needs to just take those and incorporate them into the minutes and minutes.
Wait a minute, wait. Why, why do you think we're obliged to put in our minutes things that members of the public drop on us without our request?
I, I can make a motion just like you can, or make a statement like you can.
Then make a motion.
You want to fight? I, I made a statement at the last meeting, and it, nobody could challenge it at all.
I don't hear, I don't hear any motion to that effect.
I said, I agree, put those in. I want to see those in the minutes. I've got that prerogative.
Well, I think you must have done it under your breath, because I don't remember it.
Going to pull the tapes of the meeting. Oh, it's not going to be this way for two more years, that's all I can say.
I, I'm going to ask on this from our attorney. Is this something that can, if it's requested by Mr. Tinkle, that they be added to the minutes? That it's something the board can vote on, or is this something that?
But typically, a board member will ask, and the board is, is a matter, the future body will agree, you have a particular document being attached to the minutes and be part of the record.
What's the purpose?
Memorialization of it, for some. But they are public records. Once it's handed to you, it's a public record, has to be maintained anyways by the district custodian of records. Whether or not it's going to be attached to the minutes or just being a district records in the district office, and that's a function of the board to make that decision.
Well, it's a good example of that, and that's the assessment role. Exhibit A and B, in the 10 years that I've been involved in this, the assessment role, exhibit A and B, have never, ever, ever been available for the board to look at. Never. We approve a motion on two documents that we don't even have.
I just agree that they don't have them available. They've been available, it's just they're voluminous, whether or not you want them physically brought in.
Right.
And we're approving a motion to approve them, so we're, we're doing a blanket approval in the blind.
Again, you can always, you can request that they be brought in, bring in the big binder with mall.
Well, use that as a basis. That's how it's been done in the past.
I know that this was, this particular issue was, I heard, I did not read, that, that this was very controversial, and I don't know what, since I wasn't here, what the board feels about making it part of the minutes? Or just having it available if somebody wants to review it? or just having it available if somebody wants to review it.
Well, when I suggested at the meeting, there was no objection to it. So that's what I'm going by.
And I, and I don't remember any, you're making that request either.
I don't think you were here.
But, um, so I will, I'm asking the, the other board members how they feel about it.
I don't want to do it. It has to do with campaign stuff, and I don't think it has any business in our books.
Well, there's also.[1623.95]